Call meeting to order, pledge allegiance, Councilmember McCollum.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Larky?
Here.
Councilmember White?
Here.
Councilmember Thompson?
Here.
Councilmember Davidson?
Here.
Councilmember Ryan?
Here.
Councilmember Lawson?
Here.
Councilmember Richardson?
Here.
Councilmember McCollum?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
We have a quorum. No personal appearances tonight, unfinished business. None. F, new business. One, motion approving resolution 2025-55.
A resolution approving the Belton Police Department purchase of a Tru-Narc Delta handheld analyzer from Fisher Scientific, part of Thermo Fisher Scientific.
Present.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Roll call, oh, sorry.
I guess, sorry, I-
I didn't look your way.
I, uh, so I'm assuming this is the exact same thing that we spoke of at our last work session?
Yes, it is.
Okay, hence why, I was just waiting for an intro from the chief, and that's why we didn't have one. So, and then just as a reminder, because I don't remember off the top of my head, but this is outside of the planned budget?
Yes, it was not budgeted for, but we're suggesting using the opioid settlement monies.
Perfect, thank you.
Anybody else? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item two, motion approving resolution 2025-56.
A resolution approving the purchase of one new public works wastewater treatment plant truck between the city of Belton, Missouri and Robert Chevrolet Buick, using cooperative purchasing agreement prices with Johnson County, Kansas, contract for services, supplies, materials, or equipment for Metro Vehicle bid model 2025, authorizing the execution of the same on behalf of the city.
Present.
Second.
Motion is second, you're up.
This is a resolution to replace a 14-year-old pickup truck at the treatment plant. We used a, we looked at all the different competitive bidding groups that are out there. I mean, we look at Marks and Motos and other people who have these competitive pricing and selected the Johnson County Cooperative Agreement to purchase through. This would be a four-wheel drive, 2025 Chevy four-door truck, four-wheel drive truck, and it's a four-door truck, too. It's a truck that the crew uses on daily basis to get parts, make runs, and it can haul the whole crew up to the city if they need to be, if they need to come to a meeting. And I'll answer any questions you might have. Oh, one more thing. It does also authorize us to dispose of the existing vehicle.
Go ahead.
I'm gonna abstain from this vote, just given my corporate employment, so just want to point that out.
Understood. Anybody else? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any objections?
Abstain.
Motion carries. Item G, consent agenda. One motion, non-abiable to approve the recommendations noted. Any member of the council may ask for an item to be taken from the consent agenda for discussion in separate action. Present.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion?
Yeah, I, I want to pull the number one, the only thing I missed.
There's only one thing on there, so-
Yeah, that's why I was, I don't, so, yeah, is that, do we need to, do we need to, okay, perfect.
Only one thing, start talking.
Um, so, I just wanna, so in the minutes regarding the council communications, I think this might just be a Scrivener's error potentially, but it appears as though I am asking for a quarterly update on the parks master plan. That's the way I interpreted the way those minutes read. So I guess I'm just asking that we change that to reflect that I was asking for a quarterly or some other regularly planned update on the city comprehensive plan, not necessarily the parks one, because I believe the parks will give us updates as appropriate. So, I just wanted to make that distinction clear, because it wasn't clear to me.
So indeed, you were asking for staff to provide quarterly updates on the city master plan, or city comprehensive plan?
Yes, and I was, I did reference the parks master plan because, because that's where I got the idea from, or reminder from, but it wasn't because I was asking about the parks master plan specifically, I was actually asking about the city comprehensive plan.
Thank you, I'll make that statement in the minutes here.
Yep, thank you. All right, that's everything I had.
Scrivener's error, all right, all right.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Communication from City Council, Councilmember Johnson.
Just wanted to thank the police department for their presence and their kindness at the Mark Alford thing on, event on Monday. I think things went very well. I felt sorry for them because having to stand there in the heat, because it was murderously hot that night. So I appreciate that. Went to the food truck Friday, and that was a great event. I think everybody that was there enjoyed it and enjoyed the music. The music, the Casey Symphony Music Box on Saturday was a great event, enjoyed that, and appreciated receiving the article about the fire department chief staff. That was really great. That's all I've got.
Just want to also double down on that Kansas City Symphony Mobile Box event that took place at our Peace Park there. I want to thank the staff, as well as the chamber, and anyone else who was involved in making that happen, because I thought it was a really great event, and we had good attendance, and apparently good enough where they are now planning to come back in the fall. So I think that's pretty exciting. I think that's a really good positive for our community. The TDD Board did meet. There was really no notable updates, so I don't have anything to share with you on that front. In terms of parks updates, so the kids' mud run had over 170 kids signed up, which is really awesome. That far exceeds previous years. So it's great to see the parks is continuing to put on well-received events. Also want to remind everybody, we have the farmer's market every Thursday still going on. We also have, so the food truck event that Councilmember Johnson just mentioned, that will occur again on July 11th, same place. And summer camp is still ongoing, if you want to register for that. It's, registration's on their website and will, is during weekdays. There is, believe it or not, I'm gonna start talking about August, because we are almost in here in the month of July. One of the next events coming up is a free self-defense class that will be at High Blue on Tuesday, August 5th. So if that's something you're interested in, it's free, but you do have to register for it. So go out to their website and register for it. Oh, and then one other thing, is that registration is open for all the fall sports leagues, believe that or not. So time is, is going by fast. All right, everything I got.
I got nothing.
I'll just say, if it's the same defense, self-defense class, given last year, it was really helpful and interesting. So if you're debating going, you should go.
I'm glad to hear there's another Food Truck Friday, because it was pretty good, so I just put it in my calendar, so I'll be there.
I, too, went to the, to the Music Box event. It was nice, it was really nice, and I counted about 125 people attending, so that's pretty good for the first time. Nice article that you sent, Chief Sapp, it was a good article. And this is just, I guess, a question. Because we're doing the youth couns, you know, council thing, have we ever been a sponsor of the Belton, the annual bash? Have we ever been a table sponsor for that? You know, because for their gala, it, which is, it's called Boots and Bling?
For?
For the Belton-
Educational-
Oh, Educational Foundation, okay.
Has the city ever been a table sponsor for that, and could we be, or, I mean, is that, is this not the time to ask, or, too late?
I don't know that, I can't say we have never done that.
Okay.
I know that there are a wide variety of nonprofit events and fundraisers and, and the ask will, once we start setting the precedence-
I get it.
Is going to be very large.
I just thought I'd ask, because it was, it's a worthwhile cause, and you know, we're jumping in, so, just thought I'd ask.
Sure.
Anyhow, I like the Music Box, I like the people. It was interesting to see that there were only people sitting in strips of shade. The biggest part of the yard was unsat in, the rest of it was in strips of shade, so it was fun.
I don't have anything.
I don't have anything either, so City Manager report?
I don't have anything that hasn't already been said.
All right, items for review and discussion. One, Mark Park Master Plan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As most of you know, we just recently completed our master plan with Confluence. And just a reminder, they're the same consultant who conducted the city's comprehensive plan a little over a year ago. Our process was about a year and a half, and so I thought it was important to bring Hank with Confluence to give you a little bit of information on that. And we also have a subconsultant, Leon Younger, from Indianapolis, who I believe you all can see. And he did a very significant impact study on our operations and our finances, so I'll, I'll turn it over to Hank.
Thank you, Brian. My name is Hank Myers, I'm with Confluence, Landscape Architecture and Planning here in Kansas City. We've had a great time working with Brian and his staff on the Parks and Rec Master Plan, gathering feedback from the community on the direction of the parks over the next 10 years and beyond, and also hearing from residents and what they want to see. So with that, I want to just give some introductions. Brian touched on some of our consultants, but I'll hit on a few more. Just talking about what some of the roles and responsibilities were, some of the community engagement that went through as part of this process, what some of the park findings and recommendations are, and then just a summary of what we concluded with. So we were the project lead at Confluence. We did the master planning and also led the public engagement portion. Leon with Proz Consulting was also a part of this project, and led the demographic and trends and operations and parks programming portion of the project. As part of our team as well, we had Crawford Architects, who did a facilities review, primarily focused on High Blue as part of this. And then we also had ETC, which delivered a statistically valid survey throughout the, throughout the community. As Brian mentioned, we had about an 18-month process here. You can see we started in April of '24 and just were adopted a little under a month ago. The department's mission and vision and principles, the mission was to provide an exceptional parks programs and facilities that encourage active lifestyles, create healthy environments, build strong community, and enhance the overall quality for citizens. And then their department vision is to inspire a passion for parks and recreation experiences while creating vibrant park system and service the health and wellness needs of our community. The purpose of this plan, and the whole reason why we do this, is really to define what that Parks and Rec vision is for the department. We want to make sure that whatever recommendations are coming out of this are backed by the citizens of the community. And really, those recommendations that come from this are prioritized and are strategic so that we are being good stewards of their financial resources. And this is a long-term plan that also addresses programming and capital planning, but this is also a flexible living document. So when I say that, what I mean by that is that we would expect that staff and the board revisit this document annually to see what's been completed and what recommendations should be prioritized, and see if there's been any changes in the community, which would drive some of those recommendations up higher as part of this. And we look to make this a realistic completion within the 10 years, but what we do as part of this is also provide enough recommendations in here that you're probably not going to achieve every single recommendation over that 10-year period of time. And some of those will be carried over into the next master plan, which kind of gives a basis for the next round of development 10 years from now. As part of this process, we did a community context and resource inventory. This is where, what we started was looking at the mission and vision statements, which, the mission and vision statement for the department stayed the same and carried over, but it's important for us to verify that that is still consistent with what the department believes. Leon and his crew also did a demographic study as part of this, looking at your community, and also communities surrounding and where you want to be in the future. And then we did a inventory and analysis need study. So we looked at current parks and recreation facilities, catalogued each of those, made sure that there were photographs of each of those, and also did a ranking of all of those facilities to look at conditions, ADA accessibility, and making sure that they fit the needs of the community, and look at recommendations for what improvements might be necessary down the road. We also looked at the community as far as level of service, and making sure that there's an equal distribution of parks facilities throughout the community, and where there might be a need for additional facilities down the road as development occurs. And then, as I mentioned, Crawford was also on board and did a building and facilities assessment, primarily looking at High Blue and making recommendations for improvements that they can make over the next 10 years to make that facility more efficient and serve the community in the way it needs to be. And then we did a number of public input meetings throughout this process, including a meeting in the fall at one of the festivals. And then we also put out the statistically valid survey, and then had several this spring as final recommendations were made, gathering input on if there were any changes that the community felt like needed to be addressed as part of that. So we've had vast input from the community throughout this whole process to make sure that this is reflecting everything that is the citizens' desire. During the in-person public meetings, we did a number of dot poll exercises, so looking at what the community wants, giving them a number of different amenities that they might be able to incorporate into their parks, but also looking at programming to verify what improvements need to be made to incorporate some of these elements into your existing parks, and also look at future facilities. And then we also provided feedback through online polling as well. And then, once we had all of that, along with the ETC survey results, we had staff that helped us to look at design implementation for those improvements within the community. And the overall feedback really helped to drive all of that. ETC did the statistically valid survey. I think they had well over the desired number of respondents that they needed for this process. And really, the implications about recreation, to gather objective feedback from residents on their parks, recreation facilities, and services. They were, their feedback was also there to help guide the direction of the parks, facilities, and enhancements over the next 10 years, so we took that into account when we started to look at the final implementation plan and recommendations for the parks improvements. And then we also tried to use those results to look at how the department compares to other facilities and other communities within the region and the nationally, nationally, on their benchmark server, benchmark surveys, and then really to create priorities for investments based on their improvement analysis. So as part of that, the PIR analysis and what we heard from ETC, from the amenities side, what we heard was that there's a priority for paved trails and connectivity for bikes and pedestrians, natural areas and conservation areas, paved walking trails within parks, neighborhood parks, splash pads and interactive water play or features, unpaved hiking and bike trails, fishing areas, playground areas, what, even including your existing playgrounds being improved. And then looking at large community parks and outdoor public art were the top amenities that were desired within the community. And as far as programs go, the nature programs and environmental programs, special events and performances, you do a lot of those already, but they want to make sure that those are continued, that they see those as a priority. Looking at special events for adults only, also outdoor adventure programs, cooking classes, educational classes, and then also water fitness programs. I mentioned earlier that we did an inventory and analysis of all of the parks facilities. You can see the list of your existing parks facilities here that we did a review of. And then you can start to see when we map these out within the community, where those parks all sit within the community. And we have different levels of parks, so pocket parks have a half-mile service radius, neighborhood parks have a one-mile service radius. And then you look at community parks, which have a, you know, three to five-mile service radius, and then a regional park, which has about a 10-mile service radius. And you can see where those sit within the community. As part of this, we also looked at how well is your community served overall? And so you start to see how those service radius overlap within the community, and you can start to see where they have overlapped. They are heavily served in one portion of the community, and you can see based on the level of service, the darker it is, so towards the red would mean that's not served at all. Fortunately, your entire community is served by the regional parks within your community. But as you start to look at community parks and neighborhood and pocket parks, you start to see there's some areas of the community in that orange level, which is really only served by a one park facility, which is a community park. And some are not really served by any of your neighborhood or pocket parks. And typically, you like to have about, you know, a five to 10-minute walk from residents to a parks facility. So you start to see the areas in orange are those areas where additional land could be acquired for Parks and Rec use down the road. And as new development comes onboard, and we know that the city has an ordinance in regards to land dedication as part of that, we would want to see land allocated towards parks development within some of those areas of orange that you're seeing within the community as new projects come onboard. As part of this as well, we also did, as I mentioned, park updates to each of these facilities. And we did master plan each one of those with city staff, or with the department staff as part of this. So we started with Simran Trails Park. This is a 5.8-acre neighborhood park. Some of the improvements that were desired for this park included a new parking lot, new playground, new shade structure, a paved loop trail, a pump track, basketball court, and sand volleyball court. For Simran Trails Ball Fields, we also looked at a 5.2-acre neighborhood park. Instead of the ball fields, it was desired to make this more of a dog park area within the community with a paved loop trail, additional parking and a shelter as part of this. In Cleveland Lake, we know that this is adjacent to the Arboretum facility, and the ties that are associated with that, this is a 50.8-acre regional park. And some of the improvements we looked at for this were creating some additional loop trail connections that might be missing existing today. An unpaved hiking trails, restrooms, parking lot expansion, shade structure, bridge facility, and additional parking. This is the Dryden Arboretum site, and this is the original master plan that was done for that facility. And we had no improvement, or no changes to that from what was adopted. Country View Park is a 6.7-acre neighborhood park. Some of the improvements that we looked at for this facility were the updated shelter, refurbished restrooms, some landscape planting, and then also parking lot expansion, as well as a new disc golf course layout as part of this. And then Marquee Park, we looked, this is a community park. We looked at improvements to the ball fields and softball fields, including making some of the existing field synthetic turf to make those more playable throughout the year. Also allowing you to host more tournaments and get, bring more of that sports tourism component into the, the community. We updated some parking lot layouts, looked at some nature-based playground elements, also looked at a splash pad as part of this, loop trail connections, batting cages, and some additional restrooms. And then in Memorial Park, which is a 33.5-acre community park, we looked at a maintenance facility, road connections to the senior sitter facility, some paved maintenance road improvements, entry sign and gateway enhancements, and then also the depot station facility enhancements. And then in Military Park, a 6.5-acre neighborhood park, we looked at some refurbished sports fields, shelters, and restrooms, loop trail, and a playground. And then in Peace Park, we looked at some sidewalk additions, decorative lighting, a shade element, and also some landscape screening. And Somerset Park, we looked at just a loop trail connection, some additional benches and picnic areas, some parking, and then also some additional retaining walls. And then in Wallace Park, the 39.7-acre regional park, there's some community center updates that were being recommended by Crawford, which we'll touch on here shortly as well. Pickleball courts, which are currently being installed as part of their improvements right now. New inclusive playground, and the incorporation of a field house, the field house being based on recommendations for the facility feasibility study. And so that was, this is the location that the department had settled on as far as where those improvements should fall within the community. And then also looking at some parking lot expansions and some sand volleyball courts. And then Westover Soccer Fields, we looked at the 7.2-acre neighborhood park with a parking lot, and then some soccer field improvements. As part of this as well, we also looked at some, the trails as part of this. And this is part of the trails network. You can start to see some of your existing trails within the community are the solid lines with the dash lines being proposed. These incorporate some of the improvements desired in the Metro Green Plan, which is part of the Mark Plans for the region. And also looking at where some of those proposed park additions might lay out. This is consistent with what is in your comprehensive plan, and so I want to make sure that it's very clear that all of these recommendations are in alignment with your existing comprehensive plan within the city. And then within High Blue, there was some improvements that included a new fenced play area, some office expansion and storage areas. Looking at some relocation of some of the folding partitions to make some of the spaces more usable, as well as looking at the aerobic room, some incorporation of some additional storage more interior to the facility. And then really an expansion that would incorporate some aerobic expansion and additional storage as part of that. Some other things that were added to were lockers, some reorganization of the office, as well as some expansion of the office space, some group training areas, some reorganization of the party room, as well as some of the restroom facilities as part of this as well. And with that, I will let Leon with Prose kind of talk about some of the operations and funding sources as part of this.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Our role in this was to look at the park operations and financing and program services. So our recommendations here is to develop a maintenance management plan for park maintenance with written maintenance standards for each type of park and amenity. I lost. Two is to incorporate and maximize the use of the maintenance work order system the department has in place and to maximize the value and the return on investment of that amenity in terms of the software that's there. This would help the staff and managing staff and efficiency. Improve the design and operation of the maintenance shop area and to enhance its effectiveness and efficiency. Also the productivity of the equipment that is being used. Incorporate a forestry plan for the park system that really carries over into the city as well for street trees as well as park trees. And incorporate a community gardens opportunity and, because that came out pretty strong in the community survey that people would like to see a community garden program. Also to add in the program areas, add new core programs in outdoor recreation, education, special events you're already doing as Hank said, but just kind of one area that was interesting was that they wanted adult-only events. And then active senior adults to broaden the use, user base in Belton. Develop a comprehensive fee study for updating the pricing policies to support daily operations. With the inflation increases, the fees that are associated with keeping up with that inflation need to be consistently evaluated and updated and also made more into a policy approach. And then to seek more life skill programs for teens and adults in cooking, music and financial management. Develop a stronger skilled workforce by working with Longview Community College to create a recreation training program for students interested in the field of parks and recreation. Managing recreation facilities and becoming an official of sports to help manage the park system. A lot of community colleges are engaged with park systems around the country where they're providing degrees and recreation services that really target this program and builds in a workforce, a trained workforce for the department. And then develop more special events for adults. Just make the place more, you're, Belton much more livable for young people who want to live and play in Belton. And then the financial recommendations is to update or create a new pricing partnership and earned income policies. Each one of these type of policies help to manage the efficiency of the organization, the finance and cost recovery goals, as well as limited entitlement by any partner group. Also to look at, develop a true cost of service program for programs and services that look at direct and indirect costs associated with putting on those programs and where their value sits in relationship to what the price of those programs should be based on a cost recovery goal. And then consider utilizing the existing park foundation to help support parks and recreation services and facilities or as a park partner in raising money for programs or improvements. And then developing a stronger volunteer base to build advocacy and enhance the park-related services. Volunteers are the backbone of a lot of park systems and usually end up making up 78% of the total hours of the park system workforce. So within that, we built in a implementation plan. Hank, do you want me to take this or you're taking this?
Sure, you can take it.
Okay, so with that, we established what the vision for park trails, land and trails are. We also, as Hank said, created a goal to, for each of those vision pieces. And then looked at the strategies that are associated with doing that, as well as the tactics to make it, put it in place, who's responsible, the year that it needs to be done in and what is the performance outcome that you're looking for to measure the impact of this action item. And so out of those emerging themes, we created a full implementation plan in each area of land in terms of facilities, programs, operations, capital and staffing associated with the implementation plan.
And really, all of this is summarized in the document with, for the final recommendations that looks at the total process that we went through as part of this, all the way from public engagement through the findings of the ETC survey and on into the recommendations. And then, as Leon mentioned, all of the various areas from financial to operations and programs were also incorporated as part of this. And then really, we have put all this into this presentation, which was adopted. The document was adopted about a month ago as part of this process. And so I've got my contact information in here as well that is part of this presentation that's been handed to you. And Leon is in here as well. And feel free to reach out to us with anything. But with that, we'd be open to any questions that you might have.
Any questions? Go ahead.
This is really probably a Joe question or a Brian question. But who maintains that nursery around the water tower by Public Works at Marquee Park? Parks does? Okay. I was just curious because I noticed that was turning into a ball field. And obviously, we might want to find a new place for trees. Right around the south end of Marquee Park? And, yeah, the trees there, yeah. Just was something I was noticing.
Anybody else?
Can you share some examples of special events for adults only you see in your industry?
Leon, since you handle programs, do you want to touch on that?
Art, art events that are like special events for arts, where they have music and different art type of events that are associated with that. Those are kind of music events that are associated with different types of music. And those special events are built around that. Races are like 5Ks, 10Ks. Corporate Challenge is a big deal in Kansas City area, you know, where you could be a regional supplier or some of the corporate challenge events that are associated with that event, which is one of the bigger events in the city. That's what we're talking about in terms of events.
I'll just tack on the Granny Basketball League that comes through and has their national championship in Kansas City sometimes. I've mentioned it before when I was a park liaison, but that would be really cool if there was any interest. And if not, give me a couple of years and I'll get it going.
It's great.
Maybe one other thing I was going to ask about. So for the pages about like who's responsible in the follow-up timeline, this is maybe a staff question. But like, for example, the third tactic about update consistent signage program in parks. I mean, we're already undertaking signage. We've got the Tourism Committee, Economic Development and Parks all kind of swirling in that area. So I'm hoping that there can be a lot of collaboration and consistency, not just with park signage, but across the city. Go ahead, Brian.
So I've been working with Mike. We've actually, he's given us the contact for the wayfinding sign. And we're actually, this fall winter, we're going to do a complete overhaul of all of our signs. And they'll be the same new color scheme.
Love that.
So that the wayfinding sign sends them to a particular facility, they'd be able to locate the facility based upon the same color pattern. So yeah, that's in place.
I love that it's not happening in silos because historically that can happen sometimes. Maybe there's one other thing I was going to ask about. The financial recommendations. I know Marquee Park provides some earned income when we get tournaments. And I know in the past, there's been issues with getting certain leagues through because of the turf versus grass thing. Can you give us either of you, I think maybe Leon, some examples of partnerships you've seen at parks that have been successful to help finance these kind of things?
Well, obviously sponsorship of the tournament itself. Everything from the name on the tournament, as well as all of the the various trophies and everything that goes along with that. You know, any type of sponsorship effort is one way to get financing. Naming rights for different elements of events are really popular and a lot of park systems provide that. Other ways that people are investing in parks is through scholarship programs for kids and even adults and seniors to help support health and wellness programs. Agencies are getting trails named, they're heart healthy trails. And hospitals are a major sponsor for heart healthy trails in most cities. That's another opportunity to not only help develop them, but also maintain them. But events are, you know, typically driven by the community who wants to own or be a part of events. So you have, you have the title sponsor, you have presenting sponsors, and then you have different types of event sponsors, like music sponsors and people like that that are associated with it. So those are the type of what I'm talking about in terms of earned income that can be associated with the events that we talked to Brian and his team about.
And then one other thing, it says utilize the existing park foundation. Do you mean foundation in the general sense, like what we have established? Or is there some foundation that I'm forgetting about or unaware of?
Yeah, we have a, we have a-
Well, I think you have a, go ahead, Brian.
I'm sorry, we have a Friends of Belton Foundation that, to be honest with you, is pretty inactive. There is at least two new board members. And then I've met with them and plan on activating that foundation soon due to the need for funding on the Dryden project.
Is this something that historically has been pretty active? And like some other things in our city, you know, kind of turnover or attrition and we're not replacing with younger folks? Or is this new and just hasn't gotten traction?
It was there when I got here seven years ago. The biggest project that we had done with them was the Log Cabin fundraiser like two weeks before COVID hit.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Of course, then that pretty much killed all that momentum for two or three years. And not to get into the Log Cabin project, but there's a reason why that particular project hasn't done anything. There is a plan for it, but it will not be on the scale that we were hoping for due to the condition of the logs, but-
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all of your hard work. Item two, jail remodel.
We would like to come back to city council tonight and explain the jail renovation project that you approved in the budget. Just like any home project, once you get into rebuilding and remodeling, you find additional problems. And this project had those, had many twists and turns. The municipal jail is original to the building. And so the two rock stars that handled this for the police department was Lieutenant Mary Brugge and Sergeant John Keck. And I'd like for them to do the presentation because I'm pretty proud of what they did.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. I'm Mary Brugge. I've been with the department 21 years. In that time-
Mary, pull the microphone down a little bit.
Can you hear me now? Good.
Thank you.
In that time, we have had one renovation and one addition. And I don't even remember what the department looked like prior to that. But the jail has been untouched and the department itself is 37 years old. So if you've ever did a build a home or a remodel, you know there's a lot of surprises that come with that. The city council back in February did approve us in spending the money that was allocated. It was $112,000, a little over $112,000. With this remodel, I took a lot of photos. This is Sergeant John Keck, who is our jail sergeant. He did a lot of work also himself on things that we didn't plan for. But the photos kind of speak for themselves. So I'm just going to kind of go through this and talk a little bit as I go through it. I don't know if I'm doing this right. There we go. As I said, the building itself was 37 years ago. That picture on the right side. Oh, thank you. The picture on the right side is a plaque that is outside of our break room area that shows that it was built and finished June of 1988. How about this one? There we go. That is our patrol side door. When officers walk out every day to patrol side, you'll, they'll pick a car and they'll get in their car. That's basically their office. But every day they see that sign that outside these doors, we are the police. And on the outside exterior is our jail entrance and then our Sally Port. That's on the west side of our building. Those Sally Port doors, I think, have cost us a little bit of money over the years too. We've replaced the spring on that side a year ago. And then just this last month, the other side. The right picture is an entrance into the jail where our dispatch is. And I want to remind everybody to, our police department not only houses the police, it also houses everything from patrol investigations to dispatch administration, municipal court and of course, our jail. So this project that we had approved by you guys, it had a lot of things that included removal of the existing floor coating. As you could see in that picture, there's peeling paint. What inmates would do while they were there, sometimes they would peel the paint off if they could get a hold of it and shove it down the drains, which caused a big issue a few months ago where we had to repair two different areas, areas of our sewer line. It was about $10,000 surprise. Other pictures, that right picture is our female area. If you, behind the wall is the female shower. And again, you can see peeling paint, old floor. This is the male pod, peeling paint. There are, I believe, seven male cells. Paint in each of those floors were grinded down to the bare cement and sealed. As you could see, there's some more peeling paint. If an inmate could get a hold of something, they're going to get a hold of it and either use it, eat it, throw it down the drain. So the proposal we had was submitted through the city website. The deadline was February 5th. We had three companies submit bids. The Wilson Group received the award of the bid and they also included for an extra $30,000, they would do everything, which is what we had originally cut, painting the ceiling, the corridor and some extra stuff. There was a drain in our holding cell, I believe, that had one of the metal strips that was missing. So you could get your foot or your ankle caught in it, or inmates could shove stuff down the drain. We were able to pick the new paint colors. We kind of went similar, but we went a little darker with the trim. With that, we let our corrections staff help us pick. And I do want to point out, about a year ago, our corrections staff was not full. We were struggling to get people to get hired on as corrections officers. But as of today, our corrections division is fully staffed. Before, I don't know if anybody would want to take a shower in that picture on the before side, but the right side is during the process. They're grinding the floors down where all that paint was removed. And then painting process, the trim right there is the old color. And this is the new color. Male pod, it does consist of seven, seven cells, a day room and a male shower. That's kind of what it looks like now, with the exception of the floor was sealed. Before shower. And this is the after. The corridor as you walk into the male pod and the floor there that you could see, that gray floor, that was actually done by Sergeant Keck himself and retired Sergeant J.J. Mosby. Segregation area one and two. As you can see, it looks a lot better unless you were visiting, getting a tour, or actually an inmate, you probably wouldn't know this. And there's the drain I was talking about. There was a metal bar that was missing that was very dangerous. Female pod, same thing with the male pod, it's a lot smaller. It has three cells, a female shower and a female holding. And that's that shower orig- the original picture I showed you, it's a huge difference. We also got, uh, shower boxes that then inmate, if they need to shower, they have to push a button and it does shut off pretty quickly, so they're not wasting water or just staying in there. And there's J.J. Mosby doing the floor. So this was important to get done on a specific timeline, not only because, you know, we have a facility that we need to use, but also our patrol division, if they had an arrest, they would come and we had a temporary booking area that our jailers would work at, but it was not secure. Uh, if they could not post a bond, then our patrol officer would have to transport the arrestee to Cass County Sheriff's Office. That took a lot of time for them to get there, get him booked in, and then come back to the city and be okay to take the next call. So it was finished, uh, May 30th and we've been doing great ever since. Any questions?
Any questions? Looks good.
All right, thank you, guys.
Looks good.
Yeah, I just want to say thanks for doing that. Thanks for providing us that update. I, uh, I have walked through there and that is, those pictures almost don't do it justice, I would say, so.
I agree.
All right, uh, item three, special event policy.
There's a draft going around that's being passed around.
Oh, okay.
As part of this. Back in March, the city council approved 2025 Main Street events and street closures by resolutions and a memorandum of understanding. Based on council feedback, the process has been updated. What you have in front of you is a draft MOU with updated information, including the costs for the city to provide these services and support these events. It, that should be on the backside on the last page. In updating these procedures, it was not staff's intention to make the process more burdensome, but rather to outline and set the expectations for the city and also for the outside groups. Clear is always kind and this MOU delineates each party's responsibilities. The new MOU format provides clear expectations for all parties, provides all the costs up front, and allows staff to financially prepare for overtime and the need to purchase additional items like barricades if that's needed. I'll turn this over to Mike now and he'll provide you some more information on the options for third parties to host events on Main Street.
Thank you. So ultimately, our goal is, we recognize and that definitely that was the feedback we heard from council was that having events downtown, or I guess having events on Main Street is, is important. It's, it's something that brings the community together. It serves as an economic driver for Main Street as a whole. Um, and ultimately, it's just, it's part of kind of building the community is that you can have events. And so we wanted to be able to create a process that set out those clear expectations, both for any individual or group that wanted to hold an event on Main Street, but then also held the city accountable and made expectations very clear about what it is we would be providing in terms of city services. You know, for a lot of groups that maybe have not done large-scale events that would have, you know, have us close Main Street, or, um, that would be a multi-day event, they're not necessarily, I mean, we have some groups that have done that in the past and are familiar with that. Um, but as more kind of groups come in, express interest, or as other individuals come in and expressed interest, you know, there are things that maybe they don't think about in terms of trash service, public safety, EMS service, um, as well as traffic control and other items. And so we just wanted to be as upfront as possible about what those expectations were if they were gonna close Main Street for any kind of event. Um, but then also kind of outline those expectations of what we could provide, and that's what you see in exhibit B between the trash barrels, traffic control, public officers, security, or the police officers and security, and then medical personnel, um, as well as providing then the cost that that individual or that group would, um, kind of reimburse the city for those services. Um, and part of the reason that we out, kind of created this process of, you know, the, the initial resolution to actually close the street is because there's not really a mechanism for staff to unilaterally close the street. That does still require council approval, so that would be the first resolution. And then the second resolution would be the actual MOU between the city and the organization, um, for the services and just understanding, um, kind of our, our contract with them to use the space. That would also then give council the ability to determine the city's involvement in such an event, so if we wanted to waive certain fees, or if there were certain ways that the city wanted us, or the council wanted staff to support the event going forward, that would give us, one, clear expectations, but two, would also allow us to budget for in future, if we needed to start creating some of those overtime budgets for providing public safety for these events, or providing, um, some sort of a trash service. It gives us the ability to start planning again for what we, what the council's expectations are, but then also gives us a good way to have that documented. Um, one of the things that Andrea and I kind of ran into as we started looking into this and trying to kind of look back at what had been done in the past is, I think a lot of the events that were being held on Main Street sometimes were handshake agreements, or just kind of had been done by folks who had been doing it for so long that we said, well, they've always done it this way, so, you know, we assumed certain things were gonna be done, or we assumed the city was gonna take care of something. This really helps, again, like Andrea said, with just kind of the clarity. You know, we know what the expectations are for outside third-party groups, but we then also know what the expectations are for city services and what city staff will do. We have it in black and white, so say Andrea and I are no longer here, someone can easily go back to these MOUs and these contracts and can see exactly how events were, were kind of managed going forward. And so our hope is that we can make this very simple, we can encourage others to hold events, and then we can be as upfront as possible with what those expectations are and what those, those, kind of those costs might be. Happy to answer any questions, um, about it and then, um, you know, just kind of go from there.
Go ahead.
Question?
Go ahead.
Do, so this is instead of an application fee, we're gonna, we're actually, so the Thompson family wants to hold a big musical event on Main Street. So we won't pay an application fee, we'll actually do a breakdown of what we need to have provided?
No, there's still an application that goes along with it. I just didn't bring a copy of that.
Oh, okay. So there's a fee involved with the application as well?
There is an application fee.
And these are just additional services we can provide? Is that correct?
Yes, the application would be to actually close the street. This is the details of closing the street.
And that, is that application, um, dependent on what they're doing, the fee? Or is there a flat?
It's flat.
Okay, all right. And then on, and this is just, this is just stuff that I'm thinking of. When you, when you say that they're responsible for, um, the trash, that they'll drop off the barrels and then they expect to pick up empty, um, barrels with them properly disposing of the trash and it all gets taken to Second Street and dropped off? I mean, is that, is that something that we have planned on? I mean, because we don't have big dumpsters anywhere.
So on, on exhibit A, which is the page prior to the one that you're looking at.
Okay.
Oh, sixth bullet down or so, it says arrange for trash removal. So if they would like, if the third party would like, the park department can provide trash barrels, but the applicant is responsible to dispose of the trash. And they'll need to tell us how they're planning to dispose of the trash.
Okay.
That's part of the application. There's a checkbox for, are you bringing in a dumpster? How, where are you putting it?
Okay, okay, because I, I have been to events where they were supposed to haul the trash off and it went to Second Street. I mean, not here in particular, but it went in a nice neat pile somewhere out of sight.
And I think by spelling that out and putting that in, in a, in an MOU with the organization, we can kind of hold them accountable to ensure that that trash is disposed of properly. And if not, then we, that can always be something that we have to discuss after if they want to come back for another event, or.
Well, would you do, uh, one time, uh, a refundable cleanup fee maybe to, to do, you know, that you're gonna have this event and we're gonna hold something in reserve for the fact, in case that it's not, you know, a non-refundable cleanup fee?
I would say I'd have, I'd have to look down to the left side of the table there to ask if that's something that's possible, but ultimately, I think we were mostly thinking by being upfront and, and transparent about you're going to have to take care of the trash legally, not illegally dumping it in a dumpster that it doesn't belong to them, then we're, we're doing our part in saying that they're going to have to come up with some sort of a contract, just like with, you know, street barriers. If they say they don't want to use our street barriers or our street closure, then we are requiring of them to provide to us, then who are you using for those, for those barriers and that traffic control? Would we do the exact same with the trash? Who are you using to provide that trash service? Is it, I'm, you know, if I'm holding an event, well, I'm gonna be taking it in my truck and going to Lee Summit or wherever, then that's something that I've stated in a document that is now being approved by council? Or are you gonna have someone bring in and leave a dumpster for the weekend that then everything gets hauled off and we can hold them, we can hold them to that?
Okay, and do, and, you know, this is just having, having been at these things, where, where are we gonna let them put dumpsters? I mean, and that, that's something we don't have to decide tonight, but it will be, have to be decided.
Right, and I don't, I don't think we've gotten to that granular level just yet.
Okay.
Um, and our, I think our hope is, as, as folks come forward and fill out the application and bring an MOU to council, we can start engaging in those discussions very, very specifically.
Okay.
It is required as part of the application for them to provide a map and to show on the map where they're planning to put that dumpster or other trash receptacle. That map, as well as the application, goes to staff and the Public Works Director and they'll make that determination if that's an acceptable spot to put that.
Okay, well, because it's, there could be, okay, all right.
All right.
Well, Wanda forgot to ask for her family party regarding this print and place no alcohol beyond, beyond these point signs. So, uh, is it going to be moved now that alcohol is not gonna just be freely walking up and down the street?
Those signs are, I, it's something that I provide to the applicant upon approval and they put them up at the ingress and egress points of the event, so it'll be where you're coming in at the barriers, um, because we do want it to stay in the closed area of the street.
And that, and that's not a change, I think that's-
That is not a change.
And that's, uh, crazy.
No, not at all. And, and I think that's what's required by law.
Um, very common to see that at events that you'll see a no alcohol beyond this point sign. Mm-hmm.
You done? You good?
Um, on the barricades, $530 an event. I know that the Eagles is doing the car shows, um, and I know they didn't have a lot of money to do the car shows. I mean, is this gonna be a?
One of the ideas behind doing, doing a, a policy like this and adopting a policy like this is the council can look at it and say via the application, if, if, if an event, an organization wants support from our staff, they can come and get formal support from the council. The council can vote to, you know, sponsor the event essentially and, and with that sponsorship would be our providing our services for whatever that fee might, might have been and just waiving that fee.
And on the trash cans, how do you classify if they're gonna need them? Because like if the car shows aren't having any food trucks or anything like that, do they need to have trash cans? Can they use the trash cans that are already up there?
In, in any event that's gonna require the closing of Main Street, we'll, we'll want some kind of trash can or trash disposal.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the ones that we have up there will need more? Okay.
Um, so this big piece of this, to be a point, to what you were just answering, uh, Councilmember Richardson on is, this adds consistency to what our process is so that we can better understand what is, um, being proposed when someone wants to do this type of thing?
Yeah, I think we're, we're trying to level the playing field to the point where if someone wants to come and ask for the sponsorship and then the council has to decide if it's a, if it's an event worth sponsoring, or, uh, or at least if it's one of those that's always taking place and the council says, okay, this has always been good for the community, let's go ahead and continue to support this, which is, that's the, the main thing that we see is, you know, we have these parades and things at, these car shows, things that have happened for years and years. And that way, even if they change hands, we can at least have some consistency over, over how these are applied.
Okay. And what about, um, what about, what do our neighboring cities do on this front?
I looked at, it's been a little while since I looked, but I looked at Lee Summit. I don't recall the second one.
The bigger cities do a lot more.
Yeah.
And they were quite comprehensive.
Yes.
They were quite detailed with standardized maps, lots of checkboxes, and this is what you're gonna do if you're gonna come to our city. Uh, we took it back a little bit from that, not quite so intense, uh, but the standardization of it was fabulous.
I, I will say from a legal perspective and dealing with all of my clients, Belton is one of the few cities of your size that does not already have a council-adopted special event process permit, all of that sort of stuff. Instead, we've been continuously kind of utilizing the more informal process, which, to put it mildly, is a little unfair to applicants. And it's also, could potentially be seen as, if the city council made a decision, potentially discriminatory, just because we don't have standards.
So on that, just continuing on, on, on that, I, I personally endorse this as an idea because I have also reached out, and I know you've guys heard of me talk ab nauseam to my, um, to where I grew up, but they are, they do, they host a lot of festivals there. And, um, the, what has been portrayed to me from that city is that, uh, any of the city services, including police, um, trash, and, you know, anything that would be used for that event, very similarly has a charged plan, right? Um, so I, I'm glad to see this. I was just curious if we were gonna be an outlier. It sounds like we will not be an outlier out here, so that's good. In fact, it sounds like maybe we're overdue for this, so.
Um, so this would only, um, affect non-city or parks events with a Main Street closure or another street closure, correct?
Correct, yeah. This is, this, the MOU that you, the council has in front, or in front of you right now, this is just for third-party entities. We are currently working through, um, kind of our internal version of this, that, that would include things like parks, possibly future, future arch commission events, other departments. Um, if they wanted to do an event that closed Main Street, we would have something very similar. And we're still kind of working through some of the details on that, but we want to do, because of kind of the feedback that we received back in the spring, we wanted to make sure that we had something in place for our outside partners that, that could still come forward with an event first.
Um, I like and can see how this would give consistency, make your life easier, which is always good.
Thank you. Please.
But the one thing I'm a little like unsure on is if we're adopting this to get consistency and then it's up to us if we want to waive by sponsoring an event the fee for barriers or something, that allows for some inconsistency. And I kind of expected our city attorney to flinch at that. Okay, he is, okay. I thought so. Um, so I'll just float this as an idea because we have so many folks up here that are involved with Main Street, specifically organizations. If either organization wanted to buy and rent out or loan out barricades that are matching the safety standards that we've talked about before with Public Works, um, I mean, there's such a small handful of outside third-party entities that want to come on Main Street and throw these big events, you know what I mean? That this could kill a lot of them at that cost. Additionally, you know, how do we decide how many police officers for how many hours or medical personnel for how many hours are gonna be required? And then the insurance piece, like, I don't do events, events freak me out. It's so, so much work and I have a lot of respect-
It's so, so much work and I have a lot of respect for folks that want to do them and do them, but like, potentially, this would be kind of cost prohibitive, is what I'm worried about.
So, and I want to couple that question, someone might know the answer to this, which is, would our events, like the, the little events that have a pretty big impact, like the parades, how would, how would this potentially impact those? Do we have an idea?
Well, that wouldn't be little, that would be this, that would be street closures.
Oh, no, I understand, they'd have to go through the same process, but I'm wondering how they might be impacted, because I remember hearing they don't have a lot of, you know, they're, they're based on donations.
Yeah.
Well, we waived those costs sometimes in the past, and so this at least gives us a formal process for it.
Could we fix the, the policy to where as they develop their proposal, they come to the city council before they actually fill out all that stuff and ask if the city council would be, want to be involved versus waiting till it's all, and then they realize they can't do it because they don't have the money?
I mean, isn't that what we do now, basically?
Well, but.
It would be better if you had something in front of you to consider. And it doesn't mean that we can't change what they submit, or when you make a decision here, they can go back the next day and change their paperwork.
I really, I really like the tightening of this. I've been a vendor at big events, and it's always cost me a pretty good hunk of money. And Lee Summit and whoever else you talk to are not new to this game, so they know the ramifications of having all those boxes checked. And I think it's a learning curve for us, and this is a good starting point for a learning curve, because I don't, I don't foresee our festivals getting smaller. I see we, we get more festivals. And I mean, you know, speaking for myself, I'd, I'd like to see something here on a regular basis. So I, I like the fact that we're starting this. I don't, I don't think it's tough enough, only because I've been on the other side of events. I've been in an event rather than, you know, planning an event. So I, I like the fact that we're starting this. I, I don't think that they've accidentally made it harder at these cities, because, and they're not, not having festivals because they've made it harder. They're having festivals even though that it's hard. So I don't want to be an easy mark, and I want to make your life easier, but I don't want to be an easy mark either. I, I know that we, we intend to go after events. So I like the fact that we're starting this.
I, I'm just ballparking here. But if it's two police officers at 50 bucks an hour for four hours, there's 400 bucks. If it's two EMS at 75 an hour for four hours, that's 600, we're at 1,000. Then we've got, we'll say 300 for a dumpster, 1,300. 530 for barricades. I mean, it's, it's thousands of dollars, which, to your point, when we standardize this and show people like, hey, bring a polished proposal, we want you to have your event here, it could elevate, I guess, the level of events we have, but it could also stifle or chill the type of events that we would typically see. So it just adds up really quick. And again, I don't do events, because this kind of stuff seems really hard to do. So I respect and admire all the people that go into making events happen in Belton, because ultimately, they are so good for the city. I don't know the right balance, but just thinking out loud.
Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, sorry.
I was just going to mention that one of the things that this does shine a light on for the public is that there is a cost to these things. And most of the time, it's not just, well, we have our staff anyway. It's an added cost. If it's a weekend, it's an overtime cost. If it's place, it's an overtime cost, because, you know, we have patrol, we have folks that are already assigned to their duties. And so fire, same, EMS, same thing. So it just, it just also highlights that there is an added cost to this. Now, if we want to, again, if the council decides to waive those costs and have a sponsorship, so be it, because we decided it's for the, for the greater good, for the community. Okay, that, that's fair, but I mean, this does show there is a cost.
Anybody else? All right. For vacation of Autumn Ridge easement.
Yes, staff has received a request from the developer of Autumn Ridge to vacate a utility easement that was dedicated in 2007, which runs through parts of the fourth and fifth plats of Autumn Ridge. This easement was not discovered in title work that was completed when the fourth and fifth plats were platted in 2022 and 2024, and therefore was unknown until the buyer, currently under contract, their title company found this. So with that, Planning Commission is going to hold a public hearing next Tuesday, July 1st, at 6 o'clock for the easement vacation, and then this item will be before council on July 8th.
Any questions? All right, thank you.
6 o'clock next Tuesday. Yep.
One week from today. All right, anybody else?
Can I jump back and just verify one thing about events? Sorry, Matt. Andrea, the application fee for an event is $25, correct?
We're proposing it to be 50 going forward.
Gotcha, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, hearing none, entertaining motion, enter executive session, discuss matters pertaining to legal actions according to Missouri State Statute 610.021.1 pertaining to leasing, purchase, sell of real estate according to Missouri State Statute 610.021.2 pertaining to negotiated contracts according to Missouri State Statute 610.21.12 pertaining to individual identifiable personnel records, performance ratings, or records pertaining to employees of applicants for employment according to Missouri State Statute 610.021.13 and the record be closed in the meeting adjourned from there. Present.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilmember Pryon?
Aye.
Davidson?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
White?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
McCallum?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Mayor Larky?
Yes.
Richardson?
Aye.
Motion passes.